Board of Commissioners to order. At 4:30, we had a tour of the Regional Aviation and Technical Training Center out at the Maple Complex. And we will be having a grand opening ribbon cutting on August the 8th, August the 2nd, at 9:00 a.m. You need to mark your calendar. It's quite an impressive facility. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Rene Edwards to lead us in the invocation. Would everyone please stand, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we pray. Almighty God, Creator of every good and perfect gift, we bid you welcome this night as we come from the various districts within this county. We do so for the purpose of being the best possible stewards of your creation and our God-given resources. Help us to be ever mindful of the various gifts and graces each person brings to the table, be they a county commissioner, business owner, and/or resident of this great county. May the manner in which we conduct ourselves and the business of this county commissioners' meeting be a reflection of what it means to extend brotherly and sisterly love to those we call our neighbor, so as not to tear one another down, but rather to build one another up. For it is in the name of the One who was, who is, and who will forever be, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Edwards, we thank you for coming out tonight and sharing with us. Thank you very much. Next item is approval of agenda. We have two deletions and an addition. Under public hearings, we... Please tell me again, Mr. Woody.
Items B and C have been requested for continuance until July 15th.
Okay, item B and C will be continued, and then we'll have an addition of item 8 under the consent agenda to waive a facility use fee. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Next item is public comment. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Mary Etheridge. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road, Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigation with Currituck County since 2011 over illegal spot zoning in our neighborhood. At that time, Mr. Griggs and Mr. McCord were not serving on the board, and Mr. Martin was the only commissioner voting against allowing a junkyard to be located in our neighborhood. At that time, not one entity thought a junkyard in Shawboro was a good idea, not the planning board, not the planning staff, not the Board of Adjustment, not the sheriff, not the North Carolina Cultural Resource Department, no one, except six commissioners going against everyone's recommendations. The courts have now also ruled in our favor, saying indeed it was illegal spot zoning. But this will not be a victory until our family make sure this never happens to another citizen of Currituck County. And to do that, we have filed an appeal for court costs. Why should an individual have to fight their own commissioners and then be made to bear the costs after the court's rule, the commissioners were wrong? Thankfully, I did have the means to borrow money to fight this in court. And the court has ruled illegal. But if I did not have the means to fight it and borrow money, there would be a junkyard behind my house today. At the last commissioner meeting on June the 17th, after I spoke, Mr. O'Neill asked the county attorney, was there anything improper about asking if something can go before the economic board for consideration? I would like to clarify that I did not question the legality of speaking to anyone before the December 2011 meeting, because my brother-in-law, Ray Etheridge, a retired attorney, had spoken with Mr. O'Neill and Mr. Martin, and I'm sure he would not have done it if it was illegal. My comments on June the 17th were about the approval to rezone 1.1 acres of land in the Shawboro community to allow a junkyard in the neighborhood. It was about Commissioner Etheridge stating that there had been no discussions about property near the rezoning, and yet I have emails where discussions with the commissioners and the county staff of the area being ideal for accommodating contractors in building the Mid-County Bridge when these requests do come forward. I know that according to emails obtained under the public records, that Commissioner Etheridge and Commissioner O'Neill had made suggestions to Peter Bishop, the Economic Development Director. All of this done in November 2011, before Commissioner Etheridge made to a motion to approve the rezoning, and Commissioner O'Neill seconded the motion at the December the 5th, 2011, meeting while telling the public there had been no discussion. Commissioner O'Neill at the last meeting also asked the county attorney, did the county initiate an appeal? To which the county attorney said, not until the plaintiffs filed their appeal. Yes, we did win in court, and yes, the judge did rule that it was indeed illegal spot zoning. We did try to reach an agreement for a mutual agreement with the county to pay a portion of our court costs and attorney fees, but the commissioners said no. So we filed an appeal to try and recover some of the costs associated with protecting our property rights. We were told if we filed an appeal for our costs, that the county would file an appeal to try to get the illegal spot zoning overturned, even though they knew that the individual had withdrawn his special use permit in February of this year. We don't know why they would continue to fight when there is no special use permit. We don't know why the commissioners will continue to spend and waste taxpayers' money on something that is mute. We don't know why they are not willing to reach an agreement with us. But we do know that we will continue to fight, because it is a moral obligation to try and prevent this from happening to other citizens of our county. When the county is ruled wrong by the courts, a citizen should not have to bear the cost to fight an injustice. All we're asking for is to be treated fairly. And we do know that it is wonderful to see the county attorney now being asked his opinion, because 18 months ago, on December the 5th, 2011, when he was asked his opinion, he told the commissioners that it was indeed spot zoning, and that they needed to have sufficient findings and establish a reasonable basis for approval, for it to be legal, and they disregarded his opinion. As Ronald Reagan once said, "Facts are a stubborn thing." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCrea, do you have any comments?
Well...
Since we're going to play this out in the public every week, every meeting, I guess we just will play the game.
Well, I guess I'll start with the last comment, and of course, those that watched the meeting or attended it back in December 5th, 2010, I suppose it was, 11, did hear me, of course, say to the board at that time that, in my opinion, the zoning application would constitute spot zoning. But of course, I explained that that did not necessarily mean that it was illegal. But as far as the board of commissioners would want to find from the record, make certain findings from the record, to establish the reasonable basis for the spot zoning. Now, the plaintiffs challenged that and argued in court that sufficient findings were not made to uphold or withstand their challenge to the spot zoning. I argued conversely that of indeed the four elements that have to be shown for illegal spot zoning to exist, there are at least one or two that there was ample evidence in the record that would withstand their challenge, and thus the court should dismiss their complaint. The judge disagreed, and as we all know, the court ruled in favor of the plaintiffs and declared that the zoning was illegal spot zoning, because I surmise that there were not sufficient facts made at the hearing to cover the four elements that would have been necessary to establish legal spot zoning. Now, the other piece of this is the attorney fee piece. Our statutes were amended a couple of years ago by the Journal Assembly that in a challenge of a zoning action, the court may award attorney fees. That is a different process and has always been typical in North Carolina, which is usually that each party bears the cost of their own attorney fees or other costs if they go to court. But relative to zoning actions now, there is a method by which a court may discretionary, in the court's discretion, may award attorney fees if the court finds that the board acted outside their legal authority. Or secondly, the court must, with no discretion, the court must award attorney fees if the court finds that the action of the board of commissioners is arbitrary. I argued to the court the day that we heard this, that, in my opinion, Judge, the commissioners did not act beyond their legal authority, because clearly, the general statutes of North Carolina gives a board of commissioners the authority to zone and rezone property in its discretion. Yes, there may have been error made in not making certain findings that would have withheld the challenge to the spot zoning allegation, but nevertheless, the court should, in its discretion, deny attorney fees. The other piece of that, I argued to the judge that day, that there certainly was nothing arbitrary by the action taken by the board of commissioners. And I made that argument because there is law in North Carolina which gives us a definition under the law, what arbitrary and capricious means. It means typically that a board has acted in a whimsical fashion, without due consideration of the matter before it, just flippantly makes a decision. And so I argued to the judge relative to that particular piece of the legal argument, look at the record before you, Judge. I mean, there's a stack of record, probably close to a foot tall, that the board of commissioners had before it the night of that public hearing. And I pointed out to the judge that this was not something that was made just off the cuff, a decision made off the cuff, but rather this was a decision that was made after it had gone through technical review, a pre-application meeting with the planning staff, technical review committee, other meetings with planning staff. There had been a required community meeting where a number of people showed up to speak about this particular matter and to give their thoughts and opinions relative to it. There was a hearing before the planning board, there was a planning board decision, there was a public hearing before the board of commissioners, and ultimately, of course, the board of commissioners' decision, in which you determined, in your discretion and your judgment, that this was an appropriate zoning classification for this particular piece of property. Evidently, the court agreed, because what the court ultimately ruled, as we talked about at the last meeting, is that while it was illegal spot zoning, the court denied the plaintiffs' request for attorney fees. So you can only come to the conclusion that the court determined in its...that there was no mandatory basis upon which to award attorney fees, that there was no arbitrary decision, no whimsical decision, no off-the-cuff, flippant decision by this board of commissioners, but rather it was a duly considered, well-thought-out, well-heard decision of the board of commissioners. But others maybe disagreed with that, challenged it, and the court agreed that there were not sufficient findings made to support the spot zoning allegation. So that's what this case is all about. Now, the board of commissioners did entertain an offer, a proposal from the plaintiffs to pay them attorney fees. I think the board determined that that amount was of such amount, particularly in light of the fact that the court found there was no need or basis for the county to make a payment of attorney fees, that it would not be in the best interest of the public for the county to accept that offer. The plaintiffs thereafter then decided on their own accord to file their appeal to seek, to overturn the judge's decision that no attorney fee should be awarded, and are now seeking to have the Court of Appeals declare that attorney fees should be awarded. The board of commissioners made it clear that if there was going to be an appeal by the plaintiffs, then the county was going to likewise seek an appeal and ask the Court of Appeals, while you're looking at the attorney fees, we'd like the Court of Appeals to take a look at the spot zoning claim and spot zoning issue. And so we are now, both parties, going forward to the Court of Appeals and going to let them look at those two issues. And that's where it stands as of today.
And you, as the county attorney, are handling this all by yourself, correct?
That's correct.
So there is no additional money being...
Not other than the salary I receive from the county. That's correct.
Thank you. That is the only person I had signed up for public comments. I have a couple of gentlemen that signed up on the public comments for item A. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in the public comments that didn't sign up? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public comments and move to public hearings. Item A, public hearing in action, PB 1309 Shawback Materials Recovery Facility, request for a use permit for a transfer recycling center. The property is located at 8546 Carritoke Highway, tax map 124D, parcel 039A, Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody, I guess we need to have anyone that would speak in favor of or in opposition to this come up and be sworn at this time. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a use permit for a transfer recycling center. The property is located in the Harbinger Park, which is an industrial subdivision in Lower Currituck. You can see on the aerial photograph, it has some frontage on Carritoke Highway, has frontage on Park Drive and Internal Street, and then a little bit of frontage on Lissinda Lane. So the total acreage of the site's about 5.3 acres. Property's zoned light industrial. You can see on the zoning map, it's obviously the rest of the industrial park is zoned light industrial as well. To the north, you have HI zoning that's nearby, some general business zoning. Then over to the east, you see additional GB zoning across the highway. So predominantly, you have LIHI and GB zoning in this location. Land use plan designates the area as full service, which is a designation that supports growth, because county services are in place at those locations. To go through the request real quickly, is this is a use permit to operate a transfer recycling center. Currently, the property has received zoning permits to allow for outdoor storage and for the center to handle single stream or household recyclables. So you know, if you've seen, there's a set of scales on the property in the three-sided building, which has been built as part of the zoning permit that I just referenced in allowing the household recyclables. What this use permit does, what this request before the board tonight does, is allow for the handling, for the additional handling of recoverable materials, such as construction and demolition debris, which would be able to be brought to the site for sorting and transfer. Now, I want to note real quickly at this point, that doesn't include solid or hazardous waste. This use permit does not cover that. This use permits for recoverable materials, construction, and demolition debris. In the narrative of the request, the applicants have indicated they plan to operate the facility between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., that the floor of the facility will be cleared every night after 5:00 p.m. The improvements you'll see to the site as part of this use permit is fencing and a type D landscape yard on the side of the property where the open side of the building faces. Again, it's a three-sided building, which is required by ordinance, but the open side does face kind of in a northerly fashion, so on the northern property line, they've added additional landscaping and fencing, or have requested to add that as part of this permit application. And that's to help screen off-site views into the property. They did hold a community meeting, which is required, that was held on April 19th, 2013, nine people attended. Some of the things that came out of the community meeting included noise and smell from a dumpster on an adjacent lot, odors that may arise from materials, what types of materials were accepted, and then the amount of truck traffic to the site and the times of operation, which staff has actually recommended the condition to address some of the hours of operation and things related to that particular concern. This is a use permit, so as the board of commissioners, you have to make certain findings in order to approve this permit. The four findings are in your case analysis for your review. I'm not going to go over those individually. I will take a second, though, to kind of hit on one. Probably one of the more relevant findings for this case is that it will not injure the value of adjoining or butting lands and be in harmony with the area in which it's located. One thing I'll note is the use is in industrial use, but at the same time, it's also located in an industrial park, and it has industrial zoning in much of the surrounding area. But I'll also note that the proximity of a single-family dwelling, which is in GB property to the north, is something to be aware of, too, and that's part of why staff has recommended hours of operation be established, and I'll cover those in a second. So we are aware and sensitive to the fact that there is a single-family dwelling in the area. The TRC, the Technical Review Committee, did review this request. They do recommend approval, subject to a permit condition, that hours of operation be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., with truck traffic being limited to 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So that would mean you could have trucks going in there between 7:00 and 5:00, and then the final two hours would be the time to get the, kind of get the facility put back together and everything stored and off the floor. One last thing I'll note, too, is that the materials, the intent is that the recyclable, recoverable, household recyclables come to the facility, they're dumped, they're sorted, they're taken out to wherever their destination is that same day. If there are instances when recyclable materials are stored or have to be placed in a container, they have to be in a leak-proof bin, so there can't be open storage of materials associated with the transfer station. Planning board heard this request, and they also recommended approval of the use permit with the staff findings and conditions. And that concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Woody, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, I ask you a question. As far as these conditions, hours of operation, cleaning up, I'm assuming staff polices this type of, these restrictions to make sure that they're following?
We do. I mean, we're primarily complaint-driven. Now, if we notice that something, if we ride by and something's going on, or we notice it, we'll be proactive. But generally, if we receive complaints, we'll investigate it, and if we can verify that this operation is occurring outside of the set hours, then we would proceed with a notice of violation and civil citations, possibly.
Thank you.
I have one question. Was the hours of operation, you said, were seven to seven, was that seven days a week, including Sunday?
That is seven days a week, as it is now. That is something that the board could consider modifying through this use permit process.
Was it seven to five or seven to seven?
We had it seven to seven for the operation, but the truck traffic being limited to 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. And I think those hours came primarily from some discussions at the community meeting. So there's nothing necessarily magical about them, we just thought it was a way to try to minimize some of the impact on the house and some of the other areas.
I would think that the board would want to consider operation hours on a Sunday.
Well, I'm reading...
Says five days a week.
Five days a week is what the applicant has proposed, from 7:00 to 5:00, truck traffic, and then two hours after that for cleanup, and it says five days a week.
That was my recollection as well.
And that's from the applicant's narrative.
Right.
So they would probably need to address that, I think.
They'll address that when they come forward.
I think it's a good question.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Question. I know there was some action taken about the building a month or two, a couple of months back, or whatever, the structure. As I recall, we said it could, as a minimum, a three-sided building, and there was a lot of discussion about a four-sided building. Now, I understand there's a three-sided building that's been built. Where's the building set on the property location? Do you have a map and show that?
I do.
If I'm looking at the map here, it's set right out along Currituck Highway, is that correct?
No.
It's not? It is? Okay.
That's right.
Well, I was just looking at it here on this...
It's right there.
Okay. That answers my question there. As I was looking at the...
Let's see if I can do the site.
Layout.
Well, if I could follow up on that.
There's some aerial photographs, you can see. That probably helps you.
Okay. Where's it at? Okay. So evidently, this picture was taken before the building was built.
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
This is 2000, yeah, this is 2012 aerial photography.
Okay. I seen the one out front, and I said, boy, why didn't we put it out there like that?
What is the business that sits between it and the highway?
I believe it's John's brother's security.
Yeah.
There used to be, that there's...I'm not sure. There are a couple of buildings that obstructed. It's hard to see this building from the highway, unless you're really looking for it, to be honest.
The buildings that surround are all metal, two-story, like this building. So it's kind of...
Lynch.
Yes, sir, Mr. Griggs.
Just as a follow-up to Commissioner Vance's observation or question, it's my understanding that when staff initially looked into this, and they were preparing the text amendment language change, that at some point in time during the deliberations, staff was of the opinion and recommended that four-sided buildings should be used. What transpired from the time when staff recommendation was for a four-sided building and what we have now? What transpired that changed staff's findings?
The board of commissioners adopted a text amendment that allowed for three-sided buildings. So from that point forward, we've just worked within the context of the ordinance.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll let the applicants come and say anything that you'd like, make a presentation. We'll start with James Shawback. And Mike Norris, do you want to come up at the same time?
Sure.
Y'all, please, restate your name and address for the record.
James Shawback, 8157 Crittenden Road in Suffolk, Virginia.
Raymond Michael Norris, 319 West Start Street, Kildover Hills, North Carolina.
I'm here really just for two parts. First part, I just want to thank, you know, planning. We started this thing before the UDO was even adopted, and they've really worked with me through a bunch of changes, and we've actually kind of designed this sort of recycling aspect, and I appreciate working with the whole planning board, and I appreciate you guys, too, as well. You did your workshop, and I think we put a lot of time into it, and I just appreciate that. Secondly, I'm here to answer any questions y'all may have regarding, you know, the particular use.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, going back to Mr. Griggs's question, and maybe Mr. Shawback, you can answer. One of the criteria that we discussed about the difference between a three-sided and a four-sided was that, at the end of the day, the applicant was going to be removing stuff. There was not going to be stuff there, left there overnight. And I think, wasn't that a major criteria, the difference between a three-sided and four?
I think that was, at the time when the text amendment came through, I believe that was a focus of the discussion.
But it was based on everything has to be out of that day, it's not going to be left there to smell and rot and whatever. Okay.
Well...
Yes, sir.
I think just from some of the feedback that I've gotten from similar operations, there's also a concern about the dust that stirred up from the, I guess, dumping, moving around the debris. And the purpose, I guess, of the four-sided building was to contain that dust from infiltrating or spreading about in the various, in the proximity of where it's being worked on. And I suspect, though I don't know, that was probably predating the decision by the staff initially for the four-sided building, was addressing the dust and the, of the building materials and so forth, as they're unloaded and loaded, from spreading out in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's correct.
And of course, some of the dust and materials that would spread out, because, and y'all don't have anything to do with it, but with these dumpsters, people put anything in them. And that could be toxic materials, it could be paints, it could be anything. And of course, I think probably some of the concern is, is the dust and the materials being spread in the neighborhood. And there are two, I thought, I thought there were two single-family homes in close proximity to this location. I think there's one to the... I think there's one to the south, I believe.
Yeah, there, there's one that's really kind of across from the building, but there is, there is another home or two down, Lucinda Lane. That's correct.
Okay. But that, I think that was the rationale or reasoning behind the staff's initial suggestion for a four-sided building was for containment purposes, not necessarily for smell, but for the materials and the dust and the debris that is, and it's just a byproduct of, of the nature of the business. I mean, it's not because it's bad, but it's just...
Can you show us the proximity of the homes to where that building is?
So you can see the building is highlighted in yellow. There's a home there.
And it's divided by what's between it?
And I believe there is a home just off the map down here. What's divided, you have Lucinda Lane, so you have a road.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the other side of the road, you have an empty lot, which that empty lot is also is owned light industrial, the vacant lot, I mean. And then on the other side of the vacant lot, you then have the bay disposal property, Mr. Shawback's property, and you can see on this landscape plan, they are proposing a solid fence and pretty heavy bu, pretty heavy planting through there. So you can see where I highlighted that strip.
Mr. Woody, how high is that fence?
Six feet.
Six foot, yeah.
Six feet, yeah.
It's a six-foot solid wood fence, and we planted about 47 canopy and/or the trees, and they're just on this last round, and we put 43 shrubs around the building itself.
How high would they grow? Just how high would they grow?
Trees?
Yeah.
Well, they're six-foot now. I think they go to about a 12-foot. They're underling, under-story trees and...
That'll help.
... at the UDO there.
Well, there's some canopy trees, too, which they, they can grow like 30 feet tall, 30 or 40. That, that'll be a long time.
As well as my neighbor's property, which my property doesn't really border that house on Lucinda. That's Lou with the steelworks, and there's, there's a bunch of trees on that property.
Yes, sir.
Just past the steel company, the machine shop, isn't there another dumpster company?
Uh, yeah, there's actually two. There's several back in the park.
But you're, you're not the only person that handles dumpsters or whatever. There's already two more existing that are back there.
Yes, sir.
That are in close proximity of the house that's sitting there.
Yes, sir.
I think that's within maybe 200 feet, 200 yards, maybe.
Uh, more or less. They're down just on the other side of our pond there.
But there are two other dumpster companies right down the street.
Yes, sir.
Across from the house that's existing.
Right.
And, and I'm asking, I don't know, do those companies, will they be handling, what is it, the construction demolition materials?
Yeah, the same materials we handle as well.
So they're also handling, was it CDC materials as well?
Sure.
All right.
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Those other companies, what are their hours of operation for consistency? I mean...
I, I don't know, and I'm not sure they're even permitted to handle C and D material.
Yeah. Are you sure they're handling, are you sure they are? Because if they are, they're operating outside of the...
No, they, they haul it. I'm sorry, they haul, they pick it up and haul it, but they don't store it on their yard.
Or they don't separate it?
No, sir.
I, I would say this, I'd much rather have a C and D operation than a dumpster operation next to me.
Two.
Two of them. If I lived in proximity. What other types of, I mean, we have a light industrial park. What typically is in a light industrial park? Industry. So what other industrial uses are in the light industrial park?
Well, I, I think it begs the question, the reason we're listening to this tonight, it's a special use permit, which what's the definition of a special use permit? It's uses, that's inconsistent with the...
It's a use that could be, yeah, or could have...
It could be, and that's, that's the purpose of having the hearing.
Or could have impacts.
Is that even though there's all kinds of industrial use, not all of it is suitable for an industrial zoning area. And I'm not saying this isn't, but that's to answer your question.
I'll restate my question. What other types of uses are in that industrial area besides what you're proposing?
Well, we have two more dumpster companies that store their containers, open storage, as we're permitted to do. We have a welding shop, we have an air conditioning, heating, cooling company.
Truck shop.
A cabinet shop and a truck shop. They're joining our property right around the circle there.
Okay, I have no further questions. Anyone else have any further questions?
I'm just curious, as of my question, what's while ago, what are we going to do about the hours of operation? It's inconsistent. One says, one is asking for one thing, and then Mr. Woody is reporting as something else.
What are you proposing?
I, I propose, we, we actually picked up Currituck. Currituck is going to be bringing their single-stream material to us, and we need to pick it up on Saturday. We do not need to work on Sunday. We just need to be, receive material on Saturday because we have to pull it off the beach on Saturday.
And receive it.
Just receive material on Saturday. So, I mean, we can take Sunday off the map. We don't, I don't like to work on Sunday. I don't expect my people to as well.
So you're talking Monday through Saturday from 7:00 to 5:00?
Yes, sir. And then, well, we had two hours to clean up.
Right.
We may or may not need it, but I mean, truck traffic till 5:00.
Truck traffic stops at 5:00.
Yeah. That gives us two hours, no matter what, to keep, to get the floor...
No, no operations on Sunday.
No operations needed on Sunday. If I can't do everything, I need to do it in six days a week.
All right, any other questions?
I'd still like to know the answer to the other businesses. Are they operating, you know, different hours? And I wonder, you know, just as to put everything right and proper, I would like to know the answer to that from staff. It does not necessarily impact you, gentlemen.
And, and if I could follow up, I don't know if it's germane, actually, to what we're talking about here, but in light of the information that's just been proffered during the course of this tonight, I'd like to have staff check and see if, in fact, there is another business operating outside of the permitted parameters of the county's UDO.
Any further questions? All right, we need a, a motion from the Board for approval or denial.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. We closed the public hearing. Now we need a motion from the Board for approval or denial.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve PB 13-09 with the staff findings and recommendations included in these case analysis.
We have a motion for approval with staff findings and recommendations.
I, I second that.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I would like to know if we find out the answer to Mr. Quarantin's question, and my question about hours of operation, is there any leeway to adjust those, again, as I said earlier, to make them consistent? It's, it's going to be hard to explain to one business why, how you can operate until 8:00 at night, and we're telling somebody else they can only operate until 5:00. And you, you follow what I'm saying? I just think we need to be consistent. It's an industrial park, and industrial operations should be somewhat consistent.
I agree, but I, however, I will say that they have proffered the hours they're willing to operate, and it seems to be within normal parameters for them, so I don't think that we need to hold them up because of...
I'm not, I'm not trying to hold them up.
Or...
Not trying to hold them up. I'm asking, could we revisit that? Would the applicant be willing to revisit that if, if we find that there's a bunch of inconsistencies? That's, that was my question.
Can we make the other companies go to his app?
Well, first of all, first of all, the other companies aren't germane to this conversation. This is a special use permit concerning bay disposal, and we have to make a decision based on their application and what they've presented tonight. And if there's other companies operating, that is not germane to their application. And I don't think that we can put the two together, can we, Mr. Attorney?
No. And, and if you wanted to affect those others who may have a permit, it would necessitate having another case open for them and a hearing like, similar to this one.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, public hearing in action, PB 13-10, The Gables, requests for conditional zoning from agricultural to conditional district, single-family mainland of 97.75 acres in Moyoc on the north side of Guinea Road, tax map 22, parcel 71B, 64A, and 64E, Moyoc Township. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was getting myself caught up here. This request is a conditional zoning request for a CD, conditional district, single-family mainland district, and it's, the property's located off of Guinea Road. It is up in the Moyoc Township. As you can see on the aerial photograph, it's a number of parcels that are kind of strung together to comprise the subdivision request, or the rezoning request, excuse me. Property's currently zoned agricultural, so this, this rezoning is to a residential district. You can see on the zoning map, it's got some other parcels adjacent to it that are zoned single-family mainland. We've got actually one to the south of it that's owned conditional district, single-family mainland, and I think that's one we, this Board did probably within the past year. And of course, you can see some of the, a plan unit development overlay that was previously known as Currituck Reserve that's to the north of this. You've got a lot of activity around this particular property. I'll note this, this area is designated as full service in the land use plan, which, again, full service supports residential-type development, and it's a place where county has services and the, and the ability to support what would otherwise be denser types of development. There's a couple of policies I want to point out that support this request as well in our land use plan. One is that development or current density is appropriate for the location, particularly in full-service areas. We also have a policy that I wanted to point out, where our land use plan really promotes development that preserves natural features of the site, including existing topography, existing vegetation, et cetera, basically trying to take advantage of some of the natural features on the site. This site doesn't have a whole lot, but it's got a couple of wooded areas and a little wetland pocket, and I'll, I'll give the designer credit because he actually did a good job of designing the subdivision around the sensitive areas, which we don't always see. This particular subdivision will be 66 lots, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, which, it's the Currituck acre. It's served by county water. They'll have individual on-site septic systems now. The soils aren't great in Moyoc, really anywhere, they're, they're not great. This is no different. So generally, the soils don't rate very highly, but of course, you know, when this, if this zoning is approved, and they come back with a preliminary plat, they'll have to have lot evaluations done, so they'll have to demonstrate that eventually the lots can perk. And that'll have to be done before you can approve the subdivision plat, so I just wanted to note that. It's in a flood zone. It's either an AE flood zone or shaded X. They'll have to build the subdivision to meet those standards. Stub streets, as you saw on the previous zoning map, there's a lot of, lot of land around this particular subdivision, a lot of development in Moyoc, as you guys well know. We've talked a lot about connectivity. This particular subdivision has connections to some adjoining parcels, so it kind of builds on the street network off of Guinea Mill Road. We'll go over that in a little more detail in a second. In your, as part of the application, conditional zoning, the, the applicant did submit three zoning conditions, which relate to the density of the subdivision, providing a buffer adjacent to the farmland to make sure there's not compatibility issues between the subdivision and adjacent farmland. And some additional screening they're providing adjacent to residential properties. They're trying to buffer this subdivision from its neighbors to be more compatible. They also held a community meeting for the subdivision on April 23rd, or the rezoning, excuse me, April 23rd, 2013. A lot of the topics that came up at the rezoning were stormwater management, traffic, buffering, which I think they tried to address the buffering for the zoning condition, height of structures, and just development issues and compatibility. They did provide a summary of the meeting that was in your packet. The TRC has reviewed this rezoning request. It is consistent with the land use plan, and the TRC does recommend approval of the rezoning. One thing we did do is we, we recommended that the, that the approval contain a revised condition, a fourth zoning condition. We wanted to make sure that the, that the street stub to an adjoining property owned by Mr. Old would be required, and we actually, we wanted to do the zoning condition, which is a little unusual, but make sure this developer is trying to coordinate that street stub with Mr. Old's property to make sure we get that connection in a logical place. So they've shown a, a stub. It's really hard for you to see. Down here, they've shown the street stub right there, which is kind of comes into the old property at an awkward angle. If we can make that work, that's fine, but we wanted to make sure that if that doesn't work, if that's not a practical place for the adjoining property, that stub may have to be moved to another point on the site. But we think that connectivity is very important, and of course, we would try to work with the applicant should the connection need, need to be moved. But we did want to include that as a zoning condition. That concludes my presentation. Actually, one more thing. The planning Board heard this request, and the planning Board also recommended approval of the staff recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Woody, where the, where the connectivity is, where you showed, I guess, in the yellow right there?
Yeah.
What, what's the address? Like, I mean, is that like in 300 block of Guinea Road?
Let's go back to the, so...
Pull that up.
Here's the, you can see that, that connection was about here. And there, you see down here is, you see the big curve in Guinea Road. I don't know the address is right there, but there's the big, kind of the steep curve.
Okay. It's after Guinea Mill.
Yes, it's after Guinea Mill. That's correct.
It's like the 300 block in there.
But you can see this subdivision, it comes out from Guinea on two locations, which is good. That gives different alternate, all, different ways out should you have flooding or a tree down or something. Then it also connects to the recently rezoned subdivision to CDSFM, that it connects up to what would be Currituck Reserve at some point. So it's got, it's got some good, it's got good connectivity.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, had a phone call today. The big concern with the local, the, the people that farm in the surrounding area is stormwater, and they want to make sure that this, this is covered, that their, their fields aren't going to be flooded because of this development. And can you assure the, the Board that we're, we're doing everything we can to protect the, the farmers in the surrounding area?
I can assure the Board that at your July 15th meeting, you're going to adopt a stormwater manual that's going to do a really good job of protecting adjoining properties from runoff.
Will this be under...
This will fall under that. And I think your current, your current ordinance does a really good job of that as well, so...
But this is going to do better after July 15th?
It's, they're going to, stormwater is going to be something they're going to have to manage after July 15th. And, yeah.
How will it be under that if we adopt this tonight?
Because this is just a rezoning. They haven't submitted their...
Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat or anything.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. I guess, Mr. Bissell, you'd like, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, sir, I am.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Please tell everyone your name and address, please.
I'm Mark Bissell. My office is in Kitty Hawk, and I'm representing Ross and Tina Clements on this request. They've been residents here for about 15 years, and they have, over that time, assembled several tracts of land here that now is a tract large enough that's something that's conducive to doing something really nice. As Mr. Woody indicated, as far as the context of the, of the property, most of the surrounding land has been zoned for development and slated for development. You have the Currituck Reserve to the north and the west. You have Beckmore Estates adjacent to the southwest. You have single-family homes existing to the south. You have land zoned, large tract zone GB to the south beyond Guinea Road. And then you have a subdivision plan to the east, which is Holly Ridge. So the land is almost entirely surrounded by proposed development. It's a tract that, in the land use plan, has been slated for development. We did have a community meeting in April, and as Mr. Petrie indicated, there were concerns raised about drainage, there were concerns raised about buffering, there were concerns raised about development in general. And we have seriously considered the comments that were made by the neighbors, and we revised the plan, and we added berms, we added tree buffers, we added fencing for visual and noise screening along the entrance road to protect those neighbors. We're also utilizing all of the existing drainage ways. There are about six existing drainage ways. We are maintaining those as open space and providing open space around them so that they can be improved and expanded. As Mr. Woody indicated, we will fall under the new stormwater manual that you'll be considering later this month. The stormwater runoff should actually decrease from the runoff that currently exists. So you know, we know that there's a drainage problem in the area. We're going to be putting large stormwater retention ponds on the site, and we will be maintaining those ponds in a way that reduces the runoff that exists from the farmland as it currently exists. After the development is fully built out, you will see less water coming off the site than you see now, potentially considerably less. So we've reserved significant open spaces on the site for, for ponds to hold the runoff and for, and for other, other uses. We've attempted to make the development attractive in terms of the streets, the lots, the open space plan. One of the ways we've done that is that we have actually tailored this plan to the land rather than trying to engineer the land to, to our plan. So, and by utilizing the open spaces, by utilizing the drainage ways, by maintaining the woodlands and adding woodlands to it and buffers on, on most, actually on all sides. We've got 30% open space, and we've actually, we actually, after the community meeting, increased the buffers along the south side of the property so that we had more room for trees and berms and could provide more protection to those people. We've asked for conditional zoning, and of course, one of the reasons for that conditional zoning is that so you can put conditions on the plan that helps protect the neighbors. And we've tried to do that in the conditions we've offered. We think that we have properly addressed the concerns that have been, that have been As Mr. Woody indicated, the land use plan has classified the land as full service, so it's been slated for development. And in the land use plan classification, it's slated for development at two lots per acre. We're proposing .675 lot per acre, well below the land use plan density, and just slightly above the density that you could achieve with the current agricultural zoning. But the rezoning to the, in the, in the conditional zoning will allow it to be developed at approximately the same density in a way that is much more conducive to the land and much more attractive. Can you go back to a couple of those slides that show the housing types and the?
Further down, further in the presentation, I think, Ben, according to what I'm seeing. The other way.
Well, as you can see in your agenda package, we guess we don't have the slides available, but the houses are going to be very nice. There's a lot of, they're all going to be custom-built. They're going to be in the 16 to 20, or 17 to 2500 square foot range. They're going to add some nice value to the neighborhood, very attractively designed. We've also put some typical fencing and buffers in your packets that you can see that we've paid particular attention to putting in canopy trees and understory trees and shrubs, as well as fencing for sound absorption and, and to just buffer this thing as well as we possibly can. With the land slated for development, we're trying to do the, the best job we can with that land to, to make the development attractive, to, to minimize the impact on the neighbors. And I know there are neighbors who would prefer not to have development, but I, we're trying to, to minimize the impact. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bissell, well, and the pictures look great, so I'm assuming the price point's going to be 250, 2 to, 2 to 3, somewhere in there, 100?
Probably 250 to 3, somewhere in there.
Is it going to have a homeowners association? In other words, who's going to maintain the open space? Who's going to be responsible for that? Because we've got issues in another development further north in Moyauk. They can't seem to get a homeowners association off the ground to take care of the open space.
Well, it, it will have a homeowners association, and your, your new UDO does a really good job of setting out the requirements for that association and for making sure that it's up and running before.
Prior to?
Prior to, and funded before, before the developer turns it over.
Okay. Because what happens? People come to us to solve a problem that should have been done at the outset. Thank you.
Mr. Bissell, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Is there a requirement that everyone belong to the homeowners association?
Yes, there is. It's, it's mandatory.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. As we see more of these developments coming forward, I'm concerned about fire protection. I know what kind of water system we have in our county, and yes, we're doing things to try to upgrade it. We're talking in here, option one, bring a 6-inch water line from Moyauk Landing North across the property, um, back to County, through this track to make a loop connection with the 4-inch water line on Baxter Lane. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
We've actually got, we've got excellent fire protection available here. This is just around the corner from where the county built its new elevated tank, so we've got outstanding fire protection capability right here.
I was, I, I went down a little too far and was looking. I'm sorry. But how about the main sizes or the, the, the main sizes that will be run within the developments? What size, what are they?
6 and 8 inch. We haven't actually run the model yet, and that'll be at the next stage, but we'll, we'll be looping it where we can and.
I would suggest 8 inches, is what I would suggest, but anyhow, thank you.
Mr. Bissell, also in the proposal, you're going through the development in four phases, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The initial plan would be for the, the westernmost part. I think there's either 13 or 16 lots in that, that would connect through Beckmore.
Anyone else?
Just a comment, if I could. Being a new commissioner and learning sort of kind of the ropes, I applaud your coming, bringing this to the board with the conditional rezoning. Just in my observation on the short time I've been on the board, I think that takes a lot of the pressure off of, or it helps the board, and I think it also makes for good neighbors because it's outreach and an attempt to address concerns that they have and to work with them. So it's just an observation, and I applaud that. I applaud that.
Anyone else? With that, Mr. Bissell, we'll have a lot of people in the audience. We're going to see who would like to speak next.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 1310 as revised due to its consistency with the 2006 land use plan and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next item, public hearing in action, PB 1311, Baxter's Lane Estates, request for preliminary plat special use or use permit approval of 32 residential lots located in Moyauk on the south side of Baxter Lane, tax map 9, partial 25G, Moyauk Township. Who is here to represent this request? Is someone here to represent this request?
It looks like I'm up to that.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a use permit, preliminary plat use permit request. So if the board or members, we rezoned this property in October of 2012. It was a conditional zoning as well, and so this is the next step in the process is actually bringing the preliminary plat before this board for approval. Property is zoned conditional district, single-family mainland, and you can see on the aerial photograph, it's, it's up in Moyauk off Baxter Lane. You can see the single landing subdivision just south of this property. There's a zoning district. You can see this is a single-family mainland, and then again, to the south, you've got additional single-family zoning, a little bit of light industrial, actually. And then to the north, it still remains agricultural in, in nature. Land use plan designates the property as rural. This is the subdivision layout. You can see here, it's about 55 acres. When this property initially started, it included a couple of minor subdivisions, so they were able to create some lots off of Baxter Road. They're coming back now to kind of do the larger subdivision. So what you end up having is a total of 41 lots. So you've got 32 that you're considering tonight because the other nine have already been created, but we've got a subdivision of 41 lots, basically. So that gives you a density of about .64 units per acre, which is less than a, one unit per acre. One thing I want to note real, real quickly on this particular request, this is a subdivision under our new ordinance, and we've got something called, now I'm going to take a second to explain this, called recreation and park area dedication. So our new ordinance requires that subdivisions come in and based on the total number of lots, they're either required to dedicate a certain amount of land to the county, which the county could then use for parks or public facilities, or if the dedication is not usable or something doesn't fit in our master planes, and they've got a, master plans, and they've got to provide a fee. It's called a fee in lieu of. In this particular case, the dedication came up to about 1.05 acres. Because the property is, is kind of bisected by ditches and things that make it difficult to connect to other properties, the technical review committee found that the fee in lieu of would be a better option. So in this particular case, the fee is $11,696. So it's a fairly large fee, and then that fee then goes into some sort of account, or the county holds it, and that can then be used for recreation improvements in this area. So just to explain it, the fee in lieu of is, again, not just a collection of money, it's something to be used to provide recreation for, it'll basically be 41 new households in Moyauk. And hopefully that makes sense. And in this case, that's the TRC's recommendation, is to collect the fee in lieu of. Utilities, we've got county water. Mr. Idlet's going to ask some questions on county water. It's got individual on-site wastewater. One thing that we did in the rezon, we had a lot of discussion in the rezoning about water line, fire protection, and we kind of outlined two options. One was bringing a water line down Baxter Lane, the length of Baxter Lane, which goes under the railroad tracks to this subdivision. The other option was to bring a water line from Moyauk Landing Drive, which is what goes into Single Landing, north through the county property and into the Baxter Lane subdivision. Now, the advantage to that is we create a loop in the system where we get water, looped from Baxter down to Moyauk Landing Drive. And that was the option that the, there were two options. That was one the developer chose, and probably ultimately, it's probably the better option to have the loop system in place. This is a special use permit. These preliminary plats require you to make findings under the use permit process. Those are in your staff report. Staff has given you some suggestive findings. I'm not going to read all those, but generally, we think it meets requirements for issuance of a use permit. The TRC reviewed this request, and the TRC does recommend approval. We had a couple of, one plan correction, which is included in our recommendation, nothing major. One other thing I wanted to mention, this is probably worth, like, going over with the board, too, is this site had some forest land on it, and it was, it was timbered at one point. And so our ordinance, if you remember right, when open, when open space is established, we require some sort of reforestation or we require things to be done to kind of reduce the amount of grass mowing that's got to be upkept by HOA. This is an example where they timbered the site, and what they've asked is if they can come in and use the, the areas that were timbered instead of kind of grading those out, is leave that there and let the second growth come in. So staff's agreed to that. And what that will do is hopefully is that's, and we've got, asked for a letter from a, somebody from the forestry service, but they're using second growth to fill in where the open space would be. So the idea is that eventually, where there is open space, you've got wooded areas or areas that, except for the stormwater pond, obviously, but areas that won't require ongoing maintenance. So I just wanted to cover that, too. Planning board heard this request. The planning board also recommended approval of the request with the staff recommendations, and they, and they too, recommended the pavement in lieu of dedication. So with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Mr. Idlet.
Yeah, Mr. Woody, my question wasn't so much about looping. Most certainly, that's the best option. My question simply was going to be, has engineering done it, done the calculations to see if a 6-inch line going in is a sufficient size for fire protection? We know the 4-inch line in Baxter's, down at Baxter's estate that's there now, if I'm not mistaken, we had a request some time back about, they wanted to go in and put a dry hydrant in because of no water being down in that area, a gentleman, I believe, some time back. And, you know, as we're doing this, you know, let's, let's size it right to start with. And I, I don't know what's been done, I'm asking. I know from my general experience in fire protection, 6 inches is not a sufficient size for, for providing fire protection to homes.
I could, I could ask if the county engineer wants to maybe comment on that, because he's had a lot of detailed discuss, I'm putting Eric on the spot, but he's had a lot of discussion. We've, we've spent a lot of time talking about the water line.
Sir, we did look at that during TRC, and we have asked the engineer to do a model to verify that size is proper.
So in other words, that can be adjusted?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woody, two things. We're not going to have a railroad crossing issue the way we did at Moyauk Landing Drive, are we?
No, because Baxter is a state road. Is that correct? Yeah. Baxter's already accepted by the state.
Just verify. The other thing, when we were dealing with the railroad crossing for Moyauk Landing Drive and Shingle Landing, an option that was discussed, and I think the people at Shingle Landing were against it at first, but wasn't there some discussion about tying this subdivision into Shingle Landing to allow an alternative route over the railroad tracks if something were to happen with that crossing? Was that, is that something that, that we can discuss, or is it still something we need to discuss?
That was discussed, and, and as you can see on this, it's really hard to see with the subdivision map, there's a road that stubs into the south, the bottom of that map. That actually connects into the county-owned property south of that. So if, if a road could be constructed through the county-owned property that could connect to Moyauk Landing Drive and Shingle Landing and tie into that stub street I just showed you, that would make the connection. So really, what needs to happen is, is the piece needs to be put in on the county property. Now, I'll also note, I'm off topic. By the, yeah, I don't, I don't know, that's, that's the question.
Counties don't build roads.
Illegal.
Well, the reason to bring it up, it was discussed when we were going through this railroad crossing situation, and I know the people at Shingle Landing were dead-set against it, and then all of a sudden, I think they were the ones that came back and suggested that this be an option, because we discussed this, this development last year.
I thought, I thought that was through, I thought it was through the Miller's property.
Mr. Woody, show us in, in Shingle Landing where that stub is proposed to come out of. Shingle Landing, and, and I'm, I'm with Mr. Peachery, that this was supposed to be the development that should show the connectivity from both developments? If, if I'm in agreement with Mr. Peachery.
Phase two of Shingle Landing has a stub, has a street that, that stubs here, Audrey the Red Line.
Okay, so it's on the opposite side.
Yeah, that connects to a piece of property owned by a group called the G's Group. You'll be seeing a subdivision request from them in about two months.
Okay, but I thought there was another stub on the north side of that.
There's, there's been discussion of a stub right here. The challenge with that stub is that is across county property, and as the chairman just raised the issue, who's going to build the road on the county property?
All right, if you look at Applewood Drive, which goes back towards the property, the shortest part.
You could do it, you mean somewhere like that? It's the same, it's the same thing.
That's still county property.
Still county property.
So what I'm saying is that, that the road would be shorter.
It would be, and that's true. And if that's something, you can see they've got a stormwater pond right there.
Okay, but I'm saying the further, further you go down Applewood Drive, the closer to the, to the, to this new subdivision you get.
That's, that's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, it was discussed, maybe it's, it's no longer an option, but.
I don't know, I don't know that the county has the ability to require the developer to build an off-site road. I think therein lies the problem, is it's probably in hindsight, when Shingle Landing was built, we when Shingle Landing was built, we, we probably should have had a stub road go into this tract of land from Shingle Landing, but you know, Shingle Landing obviously is one way in, one way out, and it does have the one stub south, but we should have gotten a stub north in that initial design.
Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing.
I want to comment, but they, I wouldn't sign.
You weren't sworn in.
That's okay.
If you wanna come up and be sworn in, you can comment.
All right, if you don't mind.
Then he is being sworn in.
Just once.
I'm good.
Raise your right hand, right hand.
My other right.
Yeah, your other right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Yes, sir, please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Dan Davis, I'm at 102 Creekside Drive in Shingle Landing.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make a comment about the residents not wanting the road through there. The only reason we didn't want the road at the time was because the state had not taken over our roads, and we didn't want the construction traffic from Baxter making a turnaround into our development, causing the roads to be upset even further. That was the only reason that we didn't want the road there, that's all, I just wanted to make a comment about that.
Back after that, that they said maybe we could do that when railroad track was an issue, they suggested the connectivity.
Right, but at the time, that was the reason behind it, we just didn't want, we wanted the state to take over the roads, but we didn't want the construction traffic from Baxter coming through there and tearing up the road, so.
Have they taken over the road yet?
No, they have not.
The key to making a interconnectivity work is if the next group that comes, the, what'd you say, the G's Group?
Yeah.
That has the adjoining property, that's gonna be the key to making the interconnectivity work.
It, it is, and you can see on this Baxter Lane subdivision, again, we've got two connections that come out of this too, it's, it's good to set these subdivisions up when, when it's early to make sure there's options, more than one for getting out.
The one on the bottom is kind of showing a, a stub, imaginary stub coming out of it.
It does, yeah, that stub's into the county property.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this, has the county been approached about allowing the developer to build a road through the county property? I mean, why would you stub a road into the county property if it's county property unless there's some discussion about in the future?
If, if the county ever developed that for a park, for example, that'd be a good way to get people into the park from Baxter and from Moyoc Landing Drive.
So right now, it'll be a, like a kind of cul-de-sac?
Kind of, yeah, be a cul-de-sac, exactly, be a cul-de-sac, if, if nothing ever happens, then it's just a cul-de-sac down there.
Okay, so if the county develops that property, it's a good way in?
A good way in, and it maybe, maybe it's not a road, maybe it's just an informal access for a park, or for an athletic field or something.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? With that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion, unless, Mr. Old, did you need to speak?
None, unless y'all had any questions for me.
I don't think anyone has any questions.
How many, how many acres is the, the total project?
Fifty-five, I think.
And it's what, 40?
You have 55.8 acres and it's 41 lots, so it's about .6 units per acre.
Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of PB 13-11 Baxter Lane Estates for a request for preliminary plat use permit approval of 32 additional residential lots located in Moyoc.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Under new business, item A is a resolution opposing the revival of the proposed Blackberry Disposal LLC, 490-acre municipal waste landfill in Camden County, which by the way, adjoins the backside of Moyoc, and so we thought it was kind of important for us to go on record in opposition to this. As a point of discussion, the General Assembly in 2007 changed the general statutes that would not allow a landfill, and this is a mega landfill, be importing trash from New Jersey, New York, and, and everywhere, I think at the time, it was slated to be, how, how tall was it, 20?
Many stories.
20 stories tall and about two and a half miles long as proposed. In 2007, the General Assembly adopted legislation that was upheld by the North Carolina Court of Appeals that ended that, however, our legislature in session right now has stricken that language and is reviving the ability of these mega landfills to be developed in North Carolina. So after Camden has spent millions of dollars after this was killed to do an eco-park, which they now have ready to start accepting customers, our General Assembly has revived this bill that will allow this to locate right in Camden, adjoining their eco-park, which would just be disastrous for them, and it wouldn't be very good for adjoining Moyoc, so we have a resolution in opposition, if someone wants to read it, or if y'all just want to discuss it and approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the resolution opposing revival of proposed Blackberry Disposal LLC.
And I second that motion.
And I would ask, it says this resolution's going to Representative Bob Steinberg and Senator Bill Cook and Camden County, I think we need to send it to the leadership of both chambers as well and the governor.
So moved.
Second half.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Post haste.
Yes, post haste, because it's already passed the House, and I'm not sure about the status in the Senate.
Did, did our representative vote in favor of this?
I believe, I believe it's actually passed the Senate and has now gone to the House.
Okay, yes, our, our Senate representative, I believe, did vote in favor of it.
He did vote in favor, there was an amend, an amendment to the legislation that spoke generally about the state permitting agencies could consider the impact on, I think I said military installations or their operations, which he voted in favor of that amendment, but nevertheless, the overall legislation did pass the Senate.
Which while we're talking about legislation, Mr. Scanlon, while we're on this subject, I had sent you an email with four or five issues that were passed adverse to the best interests of Currituck County and northeastern North Carolina, asking for a status, have we received that back yet?
We have not.
Could we do a follow-up tomorrow to our representatives asking them for?
Yes, sir.
A status?
Maybe we'll help be ourselves as commissioners make phone calls.
Well, that is true, but the representative said that the county.
In addition to.
Said the county manager needs to be fully engaged with the bills going on, so we need to follow up with his email with phone calls as well.
We're engaging.
Yes.
That request went to both Senator Cook and Representative Steinberg last week, midweek, I think it was four or five different bills, we asked for a status report and, a status report and went on record with our opposition to those bills, and we have not received a response back.
Just call tomorrow and ask for a status on the status report.
Yeah, and just for the record, a couple of those bills, one would remove county's authority to zone where manufactured homes could go, practical effect of that would allow single-wide mobile homes to be built or to be moved into the Outer Banks.
Or anywhere else.
Or anywhere else. Another bill would remove county's authorities to regulate stormwater, as we sit here and spend most of our time talking about stormwater and flooding, that was another bill, and it escapes me.
The environmental bill referenced to the landfill was one.
Yes, the landfill.
The status of the fracking bill.
Yes, and a bill was passed that would allow fracking and the waste, I mean, in the western part of the state, and the wa, the waste would be shipped to our district for disposal, so those bills have passed and we're trying to beat them back, we hope to have luck, so, thank you. Board appointments.
Did they vote on, did they vote?
You had, you had a motion second, did you actually vote on it? You had a motion second, but not, should be called for a vote.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I thought we had voted, it's been a long day. Move to the next item, board appointments, appointment to game commission, Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I guess, defer to the next meeting for some clarification, it was brought to my attention that my appointment may not be ready to be replaced, so I need some clarification and some, I've spoken to legal today, and I need to get some clarification on that part of making my decision.
Okay, I'm gonna move to appoint James Gard to the game board, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Commissioners report, Mr. Idlet.
The only thing I know to report is the fire assessment team was here in Currituck last week, they finished their site visits, I had the opportunity to, or I say the opportunity, a gentleman asked to speak with me one day, they were at Knights Island, the, the team leader talked with me for about an hour, kind of went over some of the things that they had seen and found and looked at and talked about and concepts, and anyhow, there'll be a preliminary report will be forthcoming, will be sent out to selected people that they have determined, then that will be shared and remarks made and sent back, then they will come and meet with us in a work session, a public work session to go over the results, I asked them to do that, so everyone heard the same thing, so that's kind of where they're at now, and sounds like they, there's, probably have some good recommendations when it's all said and done, and look forward to seeing it.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Petrie.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity the other day to go in a restaurant in Moyoc, and a person came up to me that knew me, was introduced, and sort of gave me an earful about traffic at Ranchland and Shingle Landing, I'm saying Moyoc Landing Drive, about doing a traffic study about a traffic light there, that they pretty much have given up, this person lives in Ranchland, and given up trying to get out of Ranchland on a Saturday or a Sunday, they even tried to go down, turn around, come back up to Middle Lane, and as it turned out, one of Currituck's finest chief deputy, Matt Biker, was there, and, and I asked him about it, and he says, yeah, he says, we need to do that, especially in the, in the summer months, and he said, the last time DOT did a study is they put the, the, the counters out there during the wintertime, which does not reflect the problem, so I'd like to make a motion if we could to direct staff to get in touch with DOT to do a traffic study if we could at Shingle Landing and Ranchland during the summer months, and where it's, where it's, you know, where we need it, so I'd like to make a motion that we do that, please.
I would definitely second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Motion carries, Ms. Gilbert.
Nothing, just, I hope everyone has a very enjoyable and safe Independence Day as we celebrate our independence.
Thank you. Mr. McCord.
No comment at this time.
Mr. Griggs?
Nothing for tonight.
Mr. Martin?
Happy Fourth of July.
And with that, I would just make a comment on an observation I had today, I read where Russian troops will be stationed in the United States of America to provide security at some of our events under a joint treaty that was signed June 23rd.
Who signed that?
Our president. So I just thought that was kind of ironic, in the United States of America, we're gonna have Russian troops providing security at some of our events, and with that, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, how about, well, before we do that, what time are the fireworks Thursday?
I believe about nine-ish when, when the sun goes down, gets dark enough.
And anybody that wants, at the Whalehead Club, anybody wants to go, is there a charge for parking for county residents?
There's no charge.
No charge for parking.
And I understand cornhole tournaments begin at 6:30.
Okay.
And, and the fireworks piece, it depends on which part of the beach you're on, as to what time it starts. Just a joke, just a joke.
Thank you. We had a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.